I would like to call the meeting for the planning commission for January sixteenth to order and we will take a ten minute recess. Yeah, you were just moving around there really fast. Well, I just need to do it on time.
We don't have to leave us either.
That's another, yeah, talking about. Yeah. My late email, I am sorry about that.
Boy, this is for those who are, oh my. I mean, it's perfect height for me who's five two on a good day. Depending on how I do my hair. It'll have to do, okay.
Sorry. One of the table like a table or not?
No, they they voted, they they're okay with this table.
Well, thank you again. This is the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We're starting, we went into recess because we were in a joint meeting with the city council regarding meeting rules and parliamentary process. We really appreciated that information and I'm sure we will all try to do it. If I may, I would like to welcome our two new members of the planning commission, David Dorian and Chris Olson. And that, as many of you may know, that Tracy and I were also reappointed. So congratulations, you guys. We're looking forward. And Mike and I were just saying that this is the first time, I think, in over a year that we've had all seven of us in one spot. Would you think that's correct, Debbie? Yep. Oh, even while when staff agree, life is is good. So since we have only one item that is coming over from last meeting, literally, with the, if there's no objection, is there a motion to approve the minutes from twelve December? I know that. But before we, I turn that over, I want since.
Yes, I've moved to approve the minutes from December fifth.
Okay, is there any objection, any discussion? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. The next will be the election of the chair and vice chair. So if there's no objection, I will just move along. I did that last year. What I mean to say is I'll manage the, actually, I didn't mean that. Okay, I'll be quiet. Okay, is there any nominations from the floor?
I'd like to nominate Dwight Thompson for chair.
There are second.
Oh, gosh.
This guy named Dwight Thompson has been nominated in second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, by the way, that's in Robert rules. You got to do it three times. It's just if you don't know why I did that, that's why I did that. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? But say no, nay. I hear no nays. So it will be a unanimous election. And I guess I'm chair again. Right. Well, thank you very much for your trust and I want to remind you all that according to Kenmore ordinances that this will be my last term as chair for a little while. So those of you can think about who's going to be chair next year, because it's three years in a row and I have, I get a rest. So and the rest of you also. So the next item on the agenda is the election of a vice chair and the nominations are open. Or is there anyone who would like to make a motion for?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mike Vanderland for vice chair.
There's a motion made to nominate Mike Vanderling as vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Ben Ziski. Is there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Derek Wykoff if he is interested.
Derek Wykoff?
Yes.
Okay, Derek Wykoff has been nominated. Is there a second? Are you declining? Then just speak into your mic.
I would gratefully decline at this time.
And he thanks Chris for nominating, right?
Yes, he does. Yes, I do.
Okay, so Commissioner Wykoff has respectfully declined nominations. So we are, is there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, hearing none, if there's no objection, we will cast the unanimous ballot for Commissioner Vanderling. No objections. Commissioner Vanderling is elected vice chair of the planning commission for twenty twenty four. Right, so that's our first.
Quick comment.
Yes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
You're an excellent vice chair and it's, and and I mean that seriously, because when I'm gone, I'm not worried about it. And I think that you've been on a long time. So you can appreciate how I feel that if I'm gone, you're here to take care of things. You do it well and you'll listen to everybody and give everybody that chance to talk. And it's not always the case when the chair is gone, the vice chair sometimes has a whole different personal agenda. And I think you've seen it. So I I do want to thank you. So we've done that. We have done our approval of minutes. So next, we're going to go to public comments. Or is there anyone signed up for public comments?
We have no online comments, but we have one public comment in the audience.
Public comment? Okay, not for the hearing, but for the public comment?
For both. Is it regarding the element that we're going to, the economic development element? Or is it just a general public comment?
Hearing?
Okay.
Okay, that's because it would be out of order if you discuss the in economic development during the public comment. So and I, after that whole, which you were there, you know, I got.
You you only can talk about the economic development element during the hearing. Not during comment today.
But we're going to be right to the hearing in a flash.
That's just for my understanding. Are you able to speak about an economic development or a public hearing item during public comment? My understanding is typically it's preferred.
No.
But.
You address the
Oh, apologies.
Address the chair first of all.
Chair.
Okay, so what's your question?
Um, my understanding is that it's preferred to speak during the public hearing on the economic development element. But for instance, if you need to leave earlier in the, in, then by the public hearing.
That's not the case.
Okay.
If during a meeting, if there, if we are having a public hearing, then all comments related to the topic of the public hearing must be done during the public hearing. It would not be appropriate to hear something during public comment, because it would not be in the record of the public hearing. And that's why we would do it that way. And and that's not just rules, but it is more, it's closer to statute. Because the public hearing is required by statute. And and it's on the record. Unlike the public comments, like she was saying earlier, their comments, but hearings, we, that, that's part of the record which our staff want so that they can take it to the council and they have something that they, so another issue is that if we have a correct public hearing, the council does not need to do a hearing unless they change the element in a, is the word significant manner or something, I see, I didn't even get that word right substantive manner that then they have to have another hearing. So that's sort of the whole reason for this. I didn't mean to.
No, no, that makes sense. I I just wanted to be clear. As my understanding was a little inaccurate, I don't think it's mattered in my case, but I've would, I guess I have one follow up and I'm trying to, I'll try to be brief. Could you make a statement, accepting that your statement would not be in the public? Uh, it would not be on the public record as a result of that, just simply due to your ability to show up, right? Like if you're a public citizen and you need to go home. And so the public comment occurs first, if there's, which there are tonight, but if there were a bunch of people and a bunch of people are speaking and there's more business items and agenda items, would that be acceptable? Because I've I've seen that happen before and I guess I just wanted to get to the bottom of that.
Okay, I I didn't quite clearly understand the question if some one of you, I I, okay, so state that question again, if, if and then.
Could you speak about the, in this instance, economic development element or a, any public hearing topic during public comment, acknowledging that it would not be in the public record due to personal time constraints as a private citizen?
Well, okay, so if we were not having a hearing tonight, then they could, someone could speak to the issue at another public comment and we would, that would be tracked. But it's not the same as, excuse me, not the same as testimony during the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
That's, so that's why tonight we have a hearing. Okay, I'm sorry if I was, and I'm sure I'm gonna get corrected.
No, I'm not going to correct you. I was just going to say that sometimes it's also people can submit written comments and ask somebody to submit it into the record for the public hearing. So in certain circumstances, if you can't attend the meeting or if you have to leave, you can submit comments in writing in advance of the hearing and ask them to be part of the record. So it's not only testimony, verbal testimony, you can also have written testimony as well as an option.
Thank you.
You know, you're testing me because a council member is in the back and he just can't wait to to try to get me removed. That's right. Huh, Lutesis, I see you back there in your purple husky shirt.
Mr. Chair.
You know, we've got to give you a hard time.
Mr. Chair, could I be recognized? So, so, um, point of information.
Commissioner Dorian.
I know this was late breaking today. We we had talked about perhaps adopting the land acknowledgement. I I don't know if we want to do that at this meeting or a future meeting.
Well, we, we have to put that on, we have not adopted that to our rules yet. I I responded, I believe that we had discussed it last time. We discussed it. We were waiting for the council to finish that, correct? Okay, so we can do that tonight, because the rules, even if we don't adopt the rules, you could make a motion to do, to put that onto our agenda. And we could, we could do that in the future. But I would prefer not to do that until we discuss it. Is that okay?
Yes. Yeah.
That was not a discussion between two members. It's just making clear that I understood his position. All right, so we're done with public comments, we've approved the minutes. And now we're going to do a public hearing and we actually have a I'm gonna make this short and sweet since we have one person here. Please make your comments to the topic at hand, which is opening the public hearing on the economic development element. You'll have three minutes to address the commission during the public hearing and our clerk will let you know when your three minutes are up. So clerk, would you please call our witness?
Chair, I just want to verify that you've opened the public hearing.
I have opened the public.
Thank you. We have Dan Troyan in the audience and he will speak.
I should have, I am so sorry. I'm, I'm not all here tonight after that.
No, we don't need to do a presentation. The draft has been included in the agenda and shows changes to the element in strike through and underline format.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you before. So shall we now do that? Call him up.
Dan, you may come up and give your comment.
Last, well, no, two, two ago, sorry.
Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Absolutely. This one will be much shorter, I hope. Anyway, this is my first planning commission meeting. It seemed very similar, although the proximity of the booth it's a little intimidating usually back there, so I'm not used to this. Bye. The, I liked how informative that presentation was earlier. I was desperately trying to take pictures of my screen watching on the Zoom call. I get here and they're all printed out. So luckily, digital trees are, you know, not as good for the environment, fortunately. I did have a couple comments in regard to several things, but tonight I'll keep it to HB twelve twenty. I'd spoke to Mike before and I was hoping to get some clarification on specifically the enforcement and particulars of the difference between planning and actually executing what's what's said in that bill in terms of every city county has, you know, their goals for housing. They're, in my opinion, unattainable goals. And Mike had mentioned this state could seize the town. Or not seize, sorry, take, take control. I'm sorry, he can't speak. You can, you can speak. That was concerning. I I just, I'm looking for more information on this. I read the bill myself. I didn't see anything about the town being taken control over. So I'm, I I mean, are we talking like state police storming the building? What are we, what are we doing here? So I would appreciate the chair providing a brief factual bit of information on that.
We probably could address that briefly after your testimony.
Okay. And on the Zoom call, it is hard to tell who's speaking, the little, the little box in the top corner, you can't tell who's speaking. You just see the, the presentation slides. So I was curious, next time it might be good to identify ourselves when you speak, someone asked what kind of grease they should give me, as I'm a squeaky wheel. I don't like eating grease. And I would appreciate identifying who said that.
We tried to do that and we will try harder this year.
Maybe just like oil, we could go olive oil, you know, a little bread.
Olive oil, I like olive oil.
No, I was listening online. I heard that, I heard that comment. I was like, oh, come on. No, but given, given the, the atmosphere of the, the latest meetings, I thought that was a pretty good joke. So anyway. But yeah, who, who said that? Okay, good. I'm going, I'm only going to Karen now. And Stu. Okay, thank you.
For the record, can you please state your name and city of residence?
Sorry, I'm from Renton, or I mean, sorry, I'm from Kenmore and my name is Dan Troyan.
Would you like to address that particular issue that was very interesting? Would you like to address that particular issue that was very interesting that he brought up?
Um, it it's, it's an interesting comment. It doesn't have direct relevance to the economic development element. So I would say it's not a comment to that. It's a comment in regard to House Bill twelve twenty. Um, which was legislation that was passed and kind of sets out housing targets and how those are enforced. So it's not a relevant topic for tonight's meeting. I know this question has been raised in front of the council in relation to another topic. Um, so that might be the best place to address this. I I was not prepared this evening to talk about House Bill twelve twenty, but.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need to close the public hearing.
The public hearing is closed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I I just was to his comment with regard that if we didn't comply, they could seize the city or whatever. That's not in the.
I don't think that's in, in House Bill twelve twenty. Um, they were, they, the direction then was given to Commerce to kind of implement this. As part of that, there's monitoring requirements and you then have to show if you're not meeting the targets for compliance on the housing goals and the various levels of affordability, that you then need to establish a work plan. So we have to comply with the state law and that has to then be consistent with the countywide planning policies. And our comprehensive plan has to be in compliance those. So it's, that's kind of the, what the planning level is in terms of compliance. Um, and so specifically then, those targets have to be included in our housing element. This is new information. So it doesn't break it down as fine as it currently is in the housing element. So that is something that we would be taking a look at when we bring the housing element forward to the Planning Commission. So in terms of that, then we will be taking another look at, at housing goals and housing targets. And if they are appropriately included in the comprehensive plan when we look at the housing element later this year. So that's how the Planning Commission will be.
Uh, thank you for your patience and I believe that responded to our um, our residents' statement. And um, so once in a while, when such a statement is made, clarification is best on the record. Thank you.
Uh, can I ask a point of information? Is that?
We just raised.
Related, oh, yeah.
Um, Commissioner Dorian.
Uh, and this is for, for staff. So re- related to the economic development, uh sub element or element, sorry, as it is now. We, we also have targets for jobs in a, in a similar vein. If we fail to meet job creation capacity, are there similar uh penalties, as it were, or not penalties? But could, could we be under a work plan because we failed to hit job capacity?
It's, it's not written specifically for jobs as it is for housing.
Do you have anything more that you would like of us with regard to the economic development? Man, tonight.
No, um, so and if there are any additional commissioner comments or questions or proposed amendments to the draft in front of you.
So what you're saying is we're ready to um take action and um so it's uh to be passed on to the council at the appropriate time.
That's correct, unless there are any further comments this evening or further amendments.
Okay, so we're going to look at the economic development um element. And Commissioner Olson.
Well, my question is about the economic development element and it, it might be best if I wait a minute here as I should go and find the section in line in particular. It's with regards to the email that we received. Um, and the question about the Plymouth housing development. Is now the correct time to speak to those items or should I refrain until we get further into the element and?
Well, we, okay, so that's a good point. Um, the planning commission to date has already went through the element and has um approved the element that you see for public hearing. So the next step after public hearing is final amendments and then approval of the element to be transmitted to the council um for adoption. So we are um kind of past that whole area where we go through and amend and amend and then amend and make sure we have it all right. Uh, not to say you're certainly welcome to propose amendments if you have any. But we are prepared to we are able to make a motion to, to pass this on for council approval. But do you, what, what do you, do you have some comments that you'd like to make on the economic development?
It was primarily just a clarification of phrasing. I need to pull up the correct line referenced in the email specifically about the Plymouth housing development as a partnership.
Okay, what, what line and page are you on?
That's what I'm pulling up here. I'm sorry, I should have had this ready. Um, I just saw the email right before this meeting and didn't pull it up in time. Is it okay if I take a minute to find this?
Sure, I'll see if there's um any other comments on the economic development. Uh, Commissioner Dorian.
Um, I think, I I just see the direction that Commissioner Olson is going in. I, I think it is prudent um to take the action that he's suggesting. So we ju- we just mitigate the, the specific identification of the shell property, which is, I think, one, one point. And refer more to taking opportunities to identify uh city sites for affordable housing. Um, ju- just.
Well, but that's not the affordable housing item is not a part of this element.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's referred to, this, this is the, what page is this? Four F four, see strategic opportunities. The, the wording is we embrace this part of our strategy in the last biennium by purchasing the bench and halt properties and utilizing the shell property for an affordable housing development. I, I think at this point, it would be prudent to not as- assume that that is done, that, that's worded as a, as a fait accompli.
Do you see that? Uh, I'm gonna refer the question to staff just to make sure we're.
And it's line twenty four.
Right, we've, we've got it. I'm waiting for s- uh staff comment on that.
So this language was um taken directly from the city's website in terms of the three-pronged approach for economic development. So. And it is, it's basically saying this is what they did. They purchased them and utilizing the shell property for, for an affordable housing development. That was true last year. Um, so it was factual at the time. Um, it was written, it was factual when it was brought in front of you. And as you know, it's hard to kind of keep up with things because facts change. And this is background information and reflects a moment in time. So we can do one or two things in there. We can, it, it is factual. We could leave it there. Um, or we could now, we could kind of, if you, if it's your desire, we could also just um keep the first sentence. We believe in taking matters into our own hands in order to make things happen and strike the rest. But again, this is factual information about what occurred in the last biennium. So those are my two suggestions for commission consideration.
I, I would make a motion to strike uh the latter part after we believe in taking matters into our own hands in order to make things happen. And then language after that, make a motion to strike it.
Strike the sentence after or the whole? Both sentences, one sentence, the immediate sentence.
The sentence after the first sentence on line twenty two. So line
Right.
Twenty three and twenty four.
Okay, it's been moved that the commission strike the second sentence under siege, strategic opportunities. Is there a second?
I would second.
It's been seconded. And that was by Commissioner Dorian. Is there discussion?
Good chairman.
Oh, yes.
Uh, just, just to be clear too, if this was the suggestion to move forward, the statement above, which Debbie mentioned that this was the economic development approach at the time, that would also need to be modified or changed because if we're removing sentences that were part of that originally stated economic development approach, which is on the website, then this no longer is that three-pronged approach. So just wanted to be clear of that. If we were changing that here, that statement above would have to also be modified. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Benazinski.
I understand the impetus for the request to remove. I have a feeling it has more to do with um, the specific, the shell property and it's uncertain future now as a site of affordable housing development. My concern about removing the statement is that it does make um strategic opportunities seizing them. It makes it feel nebulous. Like what I, what strategic opportunities? Right now it reads to me like the strategic, the str- the strategic opportunities we're seizing are property acquisitions for future use that serves the public good is how, how it reads with the acquisition of the properties in there. And without that, I'm left a little bit uncertain about what we mean by seizing strategic opportunities.
Any further comments? Uh, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Um, I would agree with Commissioner Benazinski. The main reason that I brought this item up was due to the email that we received, which was questioning why, why we would include the old property. And when I read that email, my gut reaction, which I wanted to follow up on and simply have not had time to do. Is that we would continue to work with Plymouth hous- Plymouth Housing in the future. If not on that particular property, potentially on other properties in elsewhere in the city of Kenmore. And I simply wanted to revisit that and ensure that if we were specifically referring to a property, um, it, it is not at odds with what we should be discussing or not discussing, but uh writing policy on effectively, right? And as, as such, the way that I'm reading this, it looks like we're talking about two different properties that are strategic elements for the benefit of the city that were factual at that time. And I don't have an issue with that. Um, I simply wanted to revisit that and ensure that we weren't specifically calling out the Plymouth housing development in particular.
If there's no one else that wants to speak to that, I would like to speak to that. There's no objection. A couple things of my concern with what you just said is that I believe that it would be improper for us to take into account the specific proposal of Plymouth Housing or anything like that and let it influence this element in the manner of, of, of what's being said here. As the implementation of the element is up to the city council and not for us. And we try as best we can not to call out specific businesses and specific projects. Having said that, I think that the word we embraced this part of the strategy last biennium is, this is an example of what was done uh in a po- and it may not have come to fruition, but a lot of things that we write about and dream about just don't happen. But that is how, in my view, our city becomes more livable and more inclusive as well as diverse. Is that uh these ideas that, that come and some of them go without being implemented. That's okay. So um actually, I guess I am speaking against your motion. You wanted to say, okay.
And on my motion, David Dorian's end.
Did you want to speak again? I, I saw a hand go up and I was looking the other way.
I, I was, I, I would like to, but I also know that not everyone has necessarily had a chance to speak.
That's for me to, to work on. So I'm looking back the other way. I didn't see any other hands. So if you want to speak one more time, you're welcome to.
All right. I absolutely agree with everything that you just said. And that was exactly my concern, um, was that we were calling out something specifically. And my gut reaction to that email was effectively that we weren't. We were calling out an example of a strategic approach that had been taken. And reading the segment, we call out bench and hold properties, not just hold property. Um, as such, I don't see this as being an issue. And I suppose that this comment is in favor somewhat against what I previously said. I simply wanted to review this matter, given the email that we had previously. Thank you.
We have um before us a motion and the motion is to strike the second sentence under siege strategic opportunities. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed indicate by saying nay. The nays have it, the motion fails. Commissioner Ben.
Could we have that section back up again on the screen? I'll phrase this as a motion. Um, I suggest we prephrase the second sentence to read. Uh, we embrace a strategy purchasing properties to utilize for affordable housing development.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Olson. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Great. I, it's, gotta get it straight here. I'm not used to having all of these folks here on the Nias. This is, you know, it's over. This is stressing me out. No, I'm just kidding. So um, would you repeat the language?
I will try as faithfully as I can.
Well, the clerk is, is right. Well, the clerk is, is writing fast over there.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna edit, make a motion.
Yeah, you did. Okay, just.
We embrace a strategy of purchasing properties or utilize for affordable housing development.
Okay, so that's, you got, you got that, Madam Clerk? Okay, I think the Deputy Madam Clerk has got it. So I see that staff is ready to wants to provide some input related to this amendment.
Well, I think seizing strategic opportunities and purchasing properties or anything else, which is a strategic opportunity. It doesn't necessarily have to be purchased, and I think it could be broader than affordable housing. My concern now is, is that you are now changing the intent of this, which is now written as the city's three, three-pronged strategic approach. So I think you kind of get, this was just put in there because this was taken straight from the website and what has been worked with by the Deputy City Manager through the, the business, Kenmore Business Alliance to kind of look at how this approach should be. And again, these were just examples. So I'm just kind of cautious or asking for some caution in amending this to kind of interpret what was meant. I, I would suggest leaving it there and maybe either next time around, or maybe this is something when you talk to council is maybe suggesting that they amend this. But I don't think the Planning Commission should be amending this right now.
Are there further comments, statements from Commissioners? Commissioner Dorian?
I think I will, I'll go back on my original point. I think it was useful for us to discuss this point because I, I think we don't want public to assume that we assume things affect companies when, when we don't. But I think the discussion and the clarification that this is from, from a website and it's to give examples and was, was a point in time that that makes sense to me. So I would actually, I'd, I'd go back on my previous thought that we should, we should change it. I think, I think we've, we've discussed it. That was important. And I think the clarification helps.
Any further comments?
I, this is Commissioner Cadre. I, I think making it more general, like Commissioner Meldling has proposed makes more sense than specifying these properties. So I do think that my vote is yes for having a general statement and it still serves the purpose, still makes sense and it still includes everything that we want to include if we just generalize it as opposed to specifying the properties here.
Commissioner Olson.
I personally would speak against this as staff has emphasized. The sentence as it reads now is we embraced this as a part of our strategy. So it's giving example of something to the first sentence, right? And in this instance, it's specific to affordable housing. My concern with a change like this is we take something that is describing an action taken in line with the policy that we are embracing and turns it into something that we are now bound, bound to. Thank you.
Commissioner Benazinski.
So just so the public is aware, we are all talking about, we are all responding here to an email that we received on a comment on the revised economic development plan. And the comment, I just wanna, I'm allowed to read it because it's part of the record, right? The comment is on two occasions, the affordable housing development with Plymouth Housing is being cited as current partnerships. Given that the actual agreement is still being drawn as we speak and uncertain, given the outspoken opposition it has received from part of the community. I would like to encourage the city and planning commission to remove this element from the current partnerships. So I just for clarity, since we are, we are talking about something that other people have not seen, I wanted to read that. However, when I search the economic development element for Plymouth, I cannot find a citation of Plymouth in the economic development. The only reference to it that I can see is on line twenty-four on page four F four, which references this utilizing the shell property. So this Plymouth Housing, just for clarification, is not being planned for the whole property. It's being planned for the shell property right now. Again, future uncertain. So utilizing the shell property for an affordable housing development. It's, I, I feel like I, I understand the sensitivity. We don't know what's going to happen. However, there's no reference to Plymouth here. I feel like it could, even if Plymouth isn't the provider, maybe in future, the shell property will be used for affordable housing with a different provider. I don't feel like I, I, I don't feel like there's anything here that was not true or could not be true in the future. And I feel like this, this language is not lang, this, this is not language that the Planning Commission is rec, is recommending from inception. It's language that was taken from somebody else who wrote it with a very specific idea in mind, which was the stress, the city's strategy for economic development. And given that I don't have full knowledge of what the people who wrote this intended with their words to start tinkering with them in the way that we're suggesting makes me uncomfortable. Because I don't want to change. I'm sure a lot of thought went into this and I don't want to change that without more knowledge about where they were and how they arrived at where they did. If I had that knowledge, I feel like I could make a better recommendation. But as it is, I feel like I would be making a recommendation based on very, very limited incomplete knowledge, and that makes me feel uncomfortable. So I, I am opposed to removing this language from the element.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanderlin.
Yeah, my motion was intended to come a compromise that left in place the concept that the city would adopt strategic strategic plan, purchasing property and trying to remove the specific references. I'm not convinced myself that we need to do that. But if there are significant portion of our other commissioners feel that that has to come out of there for some reason, then let them speak. I will withdraw my motion.
The maker of the motion has asked for it to be withdrawn. I have to ask the second if the second agrees or not.
I, I, I don't agree. This statement is not factually correct. We had a city council vote and they voted against it. And so fact, facts wise, in my opinion, that statement is incorrect. And so I would make another motion to.
We have a main motion. The question is, you're not taking your second back.
I'm not taking my second back.
Okay, so the motion remains.
Point of information.
Yes.
What part of the factual statement here is not correct?
So what you're asking is of your second. Or you don't understand what he just said.
Or information from the staff, whoever has that information to say. In reading this, it says that last biennium, the state purchased the bench and hold properties. Is that true?
Okay, so let me pause it. You, there we have two sides. He's sort of asking about his statement and his statements sort of asking about. So I'm, I, on behalf of the commission, we're asking for the, what facts you have and what your position again is.
I think the facts as they're stated are true. That the city did purchase several properties, the bench, the halt and the shell property. And last statement is and utilizing the shell property for an affordable housing development. That is true. And I think the last, and again, this was an example of how the city has seized strategic opportunities in the past. And the last sentence is saying we should continue as a city to be prepared to seize opportunities in the future that make an impact. So I think it's really saying the city should seize opportunities. Here's examples of where the city did that. And in the future, we should continue to do that when opportunities arise. So I read that and it's factual.
This is Commissioner Cadre, if I can.
So, so I just wanted to go back to the fundamental economic development approach as a whole, which is the three prongs. So by any modification or disagreement of facts or non-factual, that's irrelevant. I think that if the Planning Commission was to consider this as a whole body, meaning the three prongs, it would need to be considered all or none, because this is how it was drafted by the body or group that adopted it, or whether or not it was adopted, it was drafted this way, right? And so again, it would, it, it, the, an option which Debbie mentioned, and I don't know if everybody heard or understood that is the Planning Commission could say this is the approach as drafted at the time and it was factual at the time. However, when you make your recommendations to the Planning Commission at a date to be certain, February, whatever, that you, you could, you could mention because of the, in light of what happened recently at December eleventh or whatever with regards to Plymouth Housing, again, not called out as Commissioner Banasinski said. That this is as written, the economic development approach. However, with that said, we understand with what has happened in over the last month or so that things have changed to potentially, I don't know how you would craft the words, that's up to you guys, but that is kind of changed the, the conceptual or the, the nature of this. So, so I know I'm rambling on, but hopefully that sort of makes sense is that you say, well, in the future, we could go back planning commissioner council to address this in the future. However, because this was the economic development, these three approaches as written, because any other way, it's fundamentally changed. Regardless of what, you know, happened with Plymouth or Shell property or whatever. Hopefully that kind of makes sense. I know I'm rambling on. But could be a recommendation to council that, yes, we are leaving this in. We understand that this may create some confusion or misunderstanding about our position. However, and it's going to be up to them, I guess, unless now at this moment, the Planning Commission decides as a whole, this economic development approach should not be in the economic development element. And then that's, that's it. So.
Okay, I think you've made your point. And that, just to be clear that if we were to suggest something, we have to do it in one of two ways. We would have to approve a memo of, of information, shall we say, to go with our our submittal. Or we speak to it when we do a presentation, but that would be a matter before the commission. So now Commissioner Colm Green.
My question was answered. So at this point, I would rescind motion or my second to Mr. Vanderlin.
So let's be clear. The motion that Commissioner Vanderlin made, and he is wanting to withdraw it, you are now agreeing with his withdrawal.
That's correct, yes.
So if there's no objection from the commission, I am taking the motion, the Commissioner Vanderlin's motion off the table. Well, not off the table, but off the, God, not off the table. The, we're, we're taking it out of consideration. So is there any further motions? Are there any further emotions or emotions? Yeah, I will entertain a motion to finalize the economic development element of the comp plan as presented tonight and submit it to the city council for its consideration and adoption. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move to finalize.
That's interesting. That's why I stated it. I made it easier for you. So Commissioner Olson has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, whichever one you want, both names are long. Vanderlin and Banazinski, they, they can fight it out. Who got the second? Vanderlin is it. Okay. Okay, it's been moved in second that we finalize the element and move it to the council. That's the brief restatement of the motion. Is there any further comment? This is your chance. Go ahead, Commissioner Benazinski.
I just want to say thank you to the person who wrote in whose email that we discussed for the, the public comment and to our audience member who made public comment as well. It's important for us to hear those things.
Yeah, I, I also wanted to, on the record, thank our staff for all the work that you've done. And the support like tonight that you've provided us, it's, it's very important. Do our job in a manner that the city council is happy with. That there are consumers. So we, we're happy that we are able to do that properly. Any further comments? Commissioner Olson.
I would echo what you just said, and I would also like to apologize for any confusion I may have caused previously. I just wanted to make sure that I did follow through on that email. As I felt it was important and wanted to ensure I had a, that we reviewed it before we approved this, this evening. In the future, I'd ideally like to do so myself. So that way, when I bring it to everyone else's attention, I can actually have a line by line item and not bring up something needless. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson, you and as all of us, you know, there's never anything wrong with bringing up a topic or a concern, no matter what it is, because that's what you do as a commissioner. So don't feel bad about that. I could go through some of the things that I probably should feel bad about, but I believe that that's why we're appointed to do what we do. All right, here you know further comments. The clerk will call the rule.
Commissioner Olson, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadre?
Yes.
Commissioner Banas, Banasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vanderlin?
Yes.
And Chair Thompson?
I.
All in favor, unanimous.
We're done with the economic development element and it has been moved to the council. So just for the record, before we move to the rules, what, what is going to and when is going to be our next piece of business? Piece of business?
With the economic development element, you mean?
No, after the econo, we just finished the, that.
So the, the recommendations are tentatively scheduled to be presented to council on February twenty sixth, so at your next meeting, you'll then be determining. Individual comments that you want to make to the council, and as usual, we would give an overview of the element as a staff presentation, and then you. Presentation that is tentatively scheduled for the twenty sixth. Um, in addition to that, the council did approve your work program, the docket. Um, and it is, as I said to the council, it is ambitious, not only is it ambitious with the work that is in front of the planning commission, there is also a, a separate body of work. Which will be going to the council directly because it does not involve amendments to the comprehensive plan. That was approved on the ninth. So in front of you, um, that you will be seeing this year, you have the downtown sub-element, community design sub-element, natural environment element. Will be bringing back the housing element and land use element, particularly so that as a state law passed on middle housing and accessory dwelling units. And we now have the full information on targets that those amendments need to be now consistent with the legislation that was. Passed, so that also goes to the land use element, uh, surface water element and the capital facilities element. So those are all the com amendments, the comprehensive plan, and in terms of implementing regulations, we'll be bringing implementing regulations directly related to middle housing. Middle housing zoning regulations and cottage housing regulations, so those are on your docket. And also, when this was passed in front of the council. We add a tentative, um, schedule outlined as well as a work plan. And so I'm going to let Todd speak to that because his, his is in larger writing than mine is on his screen.
Now, related to my question, what I'm really looking for is just the rest of. Well, we are at the rest of this month already, but February particularly, what are we looking at as far as new work in February?
So, um, as far as new work, um, and this will be a conversation that Debbie and I have, whether or not we want to, um, do this. Next month or may possibly wait. We just got through the, um, middle housing, uh, request for proposals, um, we've. Made a intent to hire notice on Friday, um, we'll be working with that consultant to get on, on board and con- contract. But, um, they'll be, uh, working with us to scope out schedule and whatnot this, starting this week. So I tentatively put the, just the beginning conversation of. The need to update the housing and land use re- relationship to middle housing and other regulations, but I, I want to. Have a further conversation with Debbie and or consultant, whether that makes sense to do that or not. Other than that, the only other item of business would be what we just discussed, which is your recommendations to go to council for economic development, that's really it, so I don't have.
Doesn't take much time.
Yeah, so other than that housing land use, it could be on that same meeting, or it could be pushed to the second meeting of February, but that's. Really what I had for February at this point.
And then plus the twenty sixth with the council.
Correct, that, correct, that's the date, that's the joint meeting for your recommendations, that's correct.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Uh, just a question, uh, for the consultant, is there somewhere where we could look at the RFP that was issued for that, if there was one, or the scope of work? Related to the consulting engagement?
I think, I don't know if it's still, it, I think it's, believe it's still on the website, it just says closed, correct? Michelle, I think, I will find that out for you, I believe it's on all of the past RFPs, I believe are still there, but I'll send you a link.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments on that item? If not, we're going to move on to, um, our rules. So. The easy thing to do to start with is the original set of rules that were. That were done, and then, uh, we had them. All edited and we provided them. To you a couple of weeks ago. So that's, that's one item. Uh, is there anything on those rules that, um, and we're going to be talking about public comment, public hearing. And, and those kinds of things in a, in a second, but everything else is what I'm kind of asking about. Is there anything that we? Now, that's a good thing. All right, so the next point on this is to look at the handout that I, and the, I sent an email to today, I'm sorry for its lateness, but. I had to work it out with going through video and, and, and YouTube of the council. Stuff and then taking in some of the other, um, aspects that the attorney spoke to. During the adoption of the. Issues, the amendment to the council rules related to public comment and all, so what I did is I. Put them together here and, um, so the, the red is pulled off of decorum. Items and there's a few things that I took the liberty to add. Such as, uh, one thing. Is kind of. Whereas an example. Oh, it was the highlighted points is that I. I'll just, this is my idea, I just wanted to make sure that no one else gets blamed for it. But on page four, the yellow, I, I felt as though. We need to be clear with the public. If an action needs to happen the night of a meeting or before the next regular meeting. Because sometimes that's not really clear, and why does a meeting have to go to two in the morning, once in a while, that can happen. I mean, it's just timing is the way it worked, but we should. Place notice about that, I believe, and, uh, and the other thing, the second paragraph is. That. The, whatever the rules we adopt for public hearing and public comment. Should be, uh, made, a copy should be available right at the, um, desk, the public comment desk, so if people want to take a look. Then, um. They know what the, what the rules are, I did pull back things to the three minute mark. Rather than the five or the two. The council. Eliminated one and a half hours. You know, all that, those limits. Um, they went to eleven o'clock instead of ten o'clock. I believe that's Mr. Luths, I believe that's correct. Right, eleven o'clock, uh, we always kind of were looking at nine thirty or ten here, but, um, they. They felt eleven o'clock as far as hitting a deadline was a little. Easier in relation to the, these things. And then there's the problem that we heard tonight about what. And that's on page two of four, um, about what. You know, interruptions and. People saying things that. And I'm talking about the type of language used. And there is court rulings that says that we cannot. Unless it's personal attacks on individuals, that is completely inappropriate. We, we, we cannot tell someone that they can't use one of the seven prohibited words from the FCC. Didn't mind what my lawyer and, and attendants here would probably say, that's the best way to say it, right? Uh, we may not like that, but we've been told, it just, and we were told that tonight again, that there are certain limits that we can do. But, um, applause and things like that is something that we can limit. So, okay, I'll be quiet, comments?
Gosh, lost my voice there for a second. I just wanted to voice my support or for ten PM, um, I guess I should say, I would. Date a motion that we. Have a check in at ten PM at the absolute latest. To continue a meeting.
Okay, so your motion is saying that our meeting. Ending would be placed at least. The official ending without motion to extend would be ten o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I will state it as such.
Okay, that's good enough. That changed the end of the meeting time from eleven to ten.
Yes.
And that's been a motion, is there a second?
Well, second then.
Okay, it's been second by Commissioner Cadre. All right, discussion.
Bit of information. What is the limit today?
I, I was just going to say that, that, um, in the current draft. Um, it says, planning commission meeting shall begin at seven and continue until nine thirty PM, unless adjourned after nine thirty PM, the commission may extend the time of the adjournment. So right now, as drafted, it would end at nine thirty. So it, I guess the question then is, do you want to change your current draft to ten?
I, I went and reviewed that and I rescind my motion.
Right, because this is, this is. Eleven and or should be somewhere eleven, uh, but, um. We would have made sure that. Okay, but nonetheless, the motion is not eleven now, it's ten instead, and that would be for both. The original draft of the thicker rules that say nine thirty, it would say ten and anywhere else. That's in the rules would be ten.
Could, could I ask a question here? Um, section eleven. States nine thirty as, as Debbie has mentioned, but then we're talking about. Ten and eleven, and is this referring to special public meetings or is?
Right, we were trying, what we're trying to do is to say. You know, what we're looking for is to try to. Set a, a goal of being done at ten, and if we're not, we want to communicate that. Quickly. Now, that's for the hearing piece and the public, well, the public comments. It, it's. It's when you have public comments and a hearing at the same, on the same night. That we get into time problems or the potential for time problems. And there was also thought. Of changing the agenda. In the rules to move up the hearing to the, uh, right, it would move up right after the consent agenda, that's what I was thinking. Because that's another problem that the council faced, and we, we don't, we, we can easily fix that part. But the. The public comments and the public hearing on the same night, maybe what we should do is do a public hearing for, if we have a public hearing scheduled, we do that first and then do public comments after. The hearing. We, the hearing is very. Well, and the reason why is the hearings on the record, it is, we can't get our business done without that hearing, whereas we can get. Public may not be that happy, but the public comment could wait. Because the hearing is a piece of our work that we have got to do. Mr. Vanderlin?
I think I understand and I like where you're going. I would agree that it's the best interest of. Public hearing to have that upfront. Possible, I think, public. That, and then to close out the hearing. Then we go into our regular meeting, at that point, I think you would assess the time, because I would imagine unless it's extraordinary circumstances. Go to nine thirty or past ten o'clock for a public hearing. We would get that, we have a reasonable time for that. Heated to, we could either suspend. And the time for a regular meeting or just suspend that meeting and move our agenda to another. But I like the idea of prioritizing the public meeting first. Coming back to the timings. Currently still nine thirty for both.
Currently it's nine thirty.
Leave it there. Uh, if by some horrible circumstance, we should come to an end, we should come to a, a point where a public hearing goes beyond nine thirty. Have the ability to expand that time to whatever we think is reasonable, so it's not a stop dead, we're not saying, we're not going to take any more testament. Flexibility to do that, but at the same time, once we've closed out that public hearing, and now we're back into our regular meeting, we have the flexibility at that point to make a decision. Is it, is it worthwhile to continue this some, well, beyond nine thirty?
Or do we have to?
Or do we have to? And I think we may decide that it's just, we're exhausted enough that this is better to have this rather than extend it into, yeah. That's not a. Motion, but a comment.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes, I would, I would comment something along those same lines, I, I think from an inclusivity standpoint, I know there are times where I have had. Limited availability and would need to leave earlier in the evening, um, and so per discussion at the start of this meeting, um, well. Not the start of the joint meeting, but the start of our planning commission meeting, and my, my questions about public comment versus. Public hearing and. I, I, I think. That would allow people to be on the record immediately if they need to leave earlier in the evening, and if they wish to have a general public comment about some general item or topic that they care about. They could write it in or go to another meeting as well. But as such, their, their voice can be heard in this forum.
So do I. We need a straw. A straw ballot here, is there?
What do you make of the attempt at a?
Well, yeah, I, I, what I want to know is should we change the draft? Well, yeah, I I what I want to know is should we change the draft? So that the public hearing becomes the first item of business after the consent agenda. Is that all right? Is are you making a different suggestion?
I was intending to make a motion to.
I'm making a stroke because I I what we have to do is we have to bring back. We I I'm unable to do an formal, the ten o'clock is easy that we we fix all that. Or nine thirty or whatever it is, we can just fix that through the entire piece. That's an easy one. This one. I I I feel to do it correctly and we and would need to bring back the specific language for the motion. But if that's where we're going, I will proceed in in writing language for that.
Hey, could could someone articulate the problem that we're trying to solve? That would be helpful for me, I think.
Well, the problem we're trying to solve. Is that the public hearing got started at ten thirty at that at that. City council meeting. And then it lasted five hours. So the first thing we're that is easily identified is that could the public hearing had started at seven? Or seven thirty? And then it would have, let's just say, then it would have lasted what till? One o'clock. Twelve thirty, something like that. And then we've also whittled it down to three minutes a piece. Which all of us will. It seems like so, we're trying to get the 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 public hearing. For the record, up in the beginning of the meeting, that's the first thing to help bring back the. That's what this discussion is about.
Okay, so we're responding to. December eleventh. And projecting kind of like if that happened here. How would we make participation for residents most accessible? And allow the most people to be heard. Is that, that's the, that's the, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
That is the whole point in this is inclusive, inclusiveness, so that there's some. When someone says, well, God, that public carrying, they start. You know, chatting us down, then we can say, well, I we've we've done a different way, I think. Oh, I'm sorry.
I I think all counsel were doing on this is moving public hearings to the first order of business. They were not putting public hearings to the. This is the first thing that we do. So if, again, depending on how consistent you want to be with what the council are doing, all they're saying is when we have a public hearing, that will be the first item of business. But they will still do other things ahead of that, whether it's public comment, the consent agenda and so forth. So that's what counsel were doing. Just to kind of. Let you know that's what counsel were doing. You're asking to do something different than counsel was doing, which is fine. We can totally do that. So I think what you're saying is you would be amending your draft rules on section six. That in the event of a public hearing, after call to order, public hearing would be the first order of business.
Actually, we would adopt the consent agenda, which would have all the other things that. Just are going to go and then we would go immediately to the hearing.
So then you would be putting other public comments than after the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
Because the most important thing, oh, in my view, and I I may be completely wrong. But the most important thing we have to get accomplished to move along is that public hearing. Without it, we we can't do what we did tonight on the element.
I, all I'm saying is if you're looking at section six as drafted, just so I can figure out what change it is that you want to make. Is that you would be moving the public hearing. You would be, well, actually, no, you'd be moving the public comments down after the. Public hearing. That's all you'd be doing. Okay.
Is the. Public comment can stretch out. And I I I I personally, I shouldn't be doing this. I. I personally think that we should stick to three minutes on public comment too. But but that's up to you all. I I'm just.
Yeah, I I made a comment earlier during our. Work session before the meeting that the average attention span for a human being is a couple of seconds. And so I I think three minutes, two minutes, I think. Bring it down to two minutes. This is a thought, I'm not making any motion. Bringing it down to two minutes allows more and more people to be engaged. I think what December eleventh showed us is that our community is reactive. They're very engaged and they care about this community and they want an opportunity to be able to talk. So so I think bringing it down from three minutes to two minutes, in my opinion, may make sense, but but. Or we can have a cap if there are twenty people or more that want to speak, then maybe we bring in two minutes at that point. Otherwise, it's three minutes per person to address the commission. But I I do think that as many people that can address the commission. The council, that's what we want. We want the people to be able to express their opinions and share their thoughts on these issues. But I'm okay with three minutes at this point.
Okay, well, we can, we can do that when we bring back a full set. But are we agreed about putting the hearing at the front of the docket? Front of the agenda, sorry, got docket on, okay, good. Are there any other comments about? Notes or other things that?
Chair.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, no, ju- just to comment in in support, I I think it's really important, the the bottom of page one of four. The rules of decorum that we're we're making the point that these rules are to create an environment that is welcoming, free of intimidation and coercion. Like we, we always want to hear from the public, but that means all of the public. So we have to give a chance that people don't feel intimidated, because intimidation is not the way to force decisions. So I I think I think it's very important that we make that point is that these rules are not to stop public input, it's to allow all public to have input.
So you think that we need to have stronger language there or?
No, I think I think it's great. I'm I'm just.
So we're okay.
Supporting.
I think there's a few things we need or I. Since I. Kind of wrote this with other stuff. Probably need to clean up with regard to. Our training tonight with regard to what. The speaker. And or can't say. I think I've got stuff in here that's not good.
Well, I would look at the rules of the council rules that were adopted. Those are shown in strike through. Those are an attachment to your agenda this evening. So I think that's probably a place to start because for sure the city attorney has reviewed those.
That's good. Any other comments?
Now I'm concerned, I'm.
Commissioner Wyre.
I would. Just like to, a- as we spoke on the the two minutes or three minutes, I I can recall a lot of. Comments getting cut short at three minutes. I I don't know the stats exactly, but there seems to be a good number of cutting at three, so I would. Feel we would be doing a disservice to go any shorter than three minutes.
Mr. Benazinski, since you've had quite a few options.
Yeah, I I'm feel in favor of a three minute comment period as somebody who makes a lot of public comment, three minutes is. Actually, not that much time to get your points across. I think longer than that is too long. Three minutes feels about right to me.
Mr. Olson.
I was, I would just be repeating Benazinski, Commissioner Benazinski at this point in time. I agree, I think three minutes is appropriate. And I think if we're in a situation where. The public comment period or public hearing period is extending as we saw on December eleventh in this forum. We could revisit. This at that time.
So just if you put up with me for a moment. I'm going to ask a poll between two and three minutes. So those that prefer two minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And all those who prefer three minutes, raise their hand. It's going to be three minutes. Oh, yes, oh, please.
So I, although I favor a three minute comment period, I see Commissioner Quadre's, Quadre's point. And I I I think what counsel has settled on is. Yeah, I I I I don't want to say it's, I think, like the most brilliant solution, because I haven't really like. I don't have strongly held feelings about it myself, but it seems reasonable to me that if there's, it appears that. Public comment at three minutes would go over a very long, you know, period of time that then there's a trigger that kind of puts it back to two minutes. So that more people can participate.
They struck that.
Oh, they struck that.
They struck that.
Okay.
For the similar reasons about two versus three.
Too short and and like, and so like, for them, the trade off between like hearing more people and the time, it it was like they've just.
Well, they wanted to, I don't know what their whole, maybe they didn't want it to stretch out to midnight. And there was a little bit of a disagreement there, but. That's. One of the reasons why I. Wanted something written down there if action needs to happen or maybe, or that if. So many people show up that we're going past eleven, we will. We will continue the hearing to this date.
Yeah.
Or something like that. I mean, so that there's a, there's a warning there, there's an announcement.
Yeah.
That we have.
And you know, there is a certain security first, I think for community members to know that they're just going to have a certain amount of time and that that's not going to change. So I I can see why they, okay, thank you.
All of it's not easy. Any other? Comments or concerns and I, you know, anything like that.
I just have a a comment that I'm just happy to be part of a city that we have a hundred citizens that come out to discuss a topic. And sure, maybe we don't all agree and maybe they don't all agree, but. Damn, it's just nice to be part of a community that cares and shows up, so. I'm just, I was just thrilled that they came out, because this. What we're, we're normally seeing. So.
You're our guy.
For people. So so I'm just, I'm just happy to see that the community is engaged.
Hearing no further comments, we'll finish our agenda. Unless the staff would like to have the last word.
Not necessarily. It was, it was brought to my attention that on page, this, this is, I'm referring to your draft chair. On page three, lines twenty five to twenty seven. I I would suggest striking that because the the clerks at Kenmore ward dot gov is not our clerk, Shannon. So I would just say, take that out, it just doesn't make sense.
Or put the correct one in. Or just don't do that.
I I would just take that out.
Just take it all out, except must be submitted by twelve PM the day of the public hearing, just.
I I my procedure is they need to have it, do do it online and they need to do it by twelve o'clock the day of, yeah, so.
Would you like to pro- provide? The best language for that item?
I don't have the.
No, no, not right.
Not right now, just I can send it to you.
Yes, right, because I I'm sure there's, you know, monumental language that should be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was going to offer to provide some language for that, but if they're going to send language over, it doesn't matter.
Right. Anything for the good of the order. Hearing none, it is nine nineteen, I closed the meeting. Of the bank commission for tonight.